All right, if you can silence your devices, open for surgery. So it's six oh one, don't be excited about anything else, please, right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your brother and with your saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor, respect, and flag, not religion, just unity, Texas, one state, under God, one and universal.
Under your dedication, for that, for this moment.
Thank you.
Sorry, welcome.
Let's pray. Father, in your word, you say that God looks down from heaven upon the sons of men to see if there's anyone who has insight, anyone who seeks after God. And tonight, Father, that's what we're doing, is we're asking the God of heaven to oversee what is going to take place tonight in this meeting. Father, I pray for the city's leadership, God, that you would direct them and give them the wisdom that they need tonight to discuss the matters at hand. I pray for each item on the agenda, Lord, that your hand and your wisdom would guide each one of those. Father, I love you, and I thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Item number three, it's audience participation, so if there's an item on the agenda listed that you would wish to speak to, please contact the city secretary. We can only discuss items that are listed on the posted agenda. Item four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of October nineteenth. B is action regarding ratification of settlement agreement and release associated with matter of Brandon Cruz versus City Saginaw. C is action regarding approval of new fire station information technologies, et cetera, et cetera. D is action regarding approval of asbestos abatement for structural located at three forty-five North Saginaw Boulevard. I've had a request to pull items C and D. So, Reverend, any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for A and B only.
Mayor, I may make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, A and B only, please.
Okay. Charlie, have a second. All those in favor raise your right hand? All those opposed? No? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum this evening, full house, and I appreciate everybody coming out on a cold, rainy evening. All right, so item number C is the fire station information technology. Chief Doug Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Forgo any of the information you were presented or had an opportunity to read over or answer any questions or try to address any concerns that you have.
The one question that I have, and I addressed it to Gabe earlier, is the concern about the timing of this approval. You know, I am not comfortable with the fact that this could, the prices could increase because we're past the, that fourteen or fifteen day timeframe.
Correct. I went back to the NCS rep today, and she talked to all the manufacturers, everybody that get all their items from, and confirmed that the pricing would still be good for another week period, so we're within that week period.
We're within that week.
The POs would be issued tomorrow, so we essentially lock in those prices.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about change orders or any increase in price because it's, it's not cheap right now.
Correct.
But understandably so, but...
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
Got it.
Item number D. Sorry, I'm pulling it up. Action regarding approval of asbestos abatement for a structure located at three, four, five North Saginaw Boulevard. We want to have Larry talk about that, or Gabe talk about that? Oh, well, I was going to do C and D together, but, okay. So, D, want to have Larry? Chief Building Official Larry Little? Thank you, sir.
Excuse my voice, so...
It's all right. So, we had a question?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. I had a couple of phone calls about why is the city paying for the asbestos abatement for this property, and what do we get out of this as a city, other than spending more of our taxpayer dollars?
Cindy, I would revert that question to the administration because that is something they would decide, not me.
Okay, thank you.
The question is, why is the city doing the proceeding of the demolition? So, the building was posted as an unsafe structure, went through the standard procedure. The property owner, the Williams family, signed a release to release it for demolition and not, you know, prove that they want to salvage the structure, that sort of thing. Given its age, before it can be demolished, it has to have asbestos abated, it has asbestos in it. So, if you'll recall, we had a building on Belmont that was in poor repair some months ago. The question, why would the city be involved? It's to promote a redevelopment of the property. So, demolish an unsafe structure and hope that it sells and redevelops in the future and gets back with productive taxable value.
You think that's a high probability that we can...
You know, absolutely.
Those funds?
Sure. We, of course, can't control when a property sells, but if you've been in that area somewhat recently, within the last few months, they've moved out what I believe to be the last trailers in the city limits. Once the structure's demolished, I think it would certainly be more redevelopment-ready to sell.
Because it's been on the market for nearly a year, right?
Is it on the market?
It's currently listed.
Been on the market for...
Yeah, I think, unfortunately, one of the property owners passed away when Larry and staff was working on, through the building, unsafe building procedures, so I don't know if it's in probate or if there's errors involved, but yeah, it's to encourage a redevelopment of that property.
Gabe?
Yes.
Is there any way of recouping what money we have to spend to be able to do the asbestos abatement for that property?
Sure. I think if the, if it's a desire of the city council, the city council could approve attaching a lien to the property for the cost that the city's incurred. You know, that's a judgment call of the city council. I know the most recent demolition we did, the city council chose not to, again, to encourage timely redevelopment, but that's certainly something the city council...
The last one I remember is the one down by the post office down here.
Right.
And yeah, it was minimal, but we're talking asbestos abatement here, and that's going to get more involved, I think.
Sure, so this would be step one, the asbestos would be abated, and then, once it's, the asbestos material's been removed, then we would bring contract for an actual demolition at some, some cost.
Can this not go with the big grant?
We would need the property owner to, I guess, to request that.
So, the fourteen thousand is just to get the asbestos? We would have another amount of money to tear it down?
That's correct. Yeah. Asbestos abatement is tremendously costly, and like I mentioned, it's a, it's a redevelopment property.
We have, I mean, give me a swag on how much it's going to cost for us to tear it down.
Six to eight thousand, is that sound right?
Right now, currently, if we're talking about the demo itself, the lowest bid I have so far is nine thousand, and that's down from fifteen was the lowest prior to that.
We're talking twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to get it done, done.
Yeah, and if it's council's desire, we could incur, you know, attach a lien to the property so that whenever it sells in the future, the lien would have to be paid for.
So, can we, I mean, we got zoning, but we're spending money, so I'm assuming since we're spending money, we got skin in the game, can, can we put something on this where when they build, when they do build back, it's, it's going to be of a, of a nice thing and maybe, you know, bring in more taxes, things like that?
I think the overlay district hits that property.
I'm sorry?
The overlay district is on that property, so that we already have some...
Okay, so we already got that?
Yeah, so the property is, that's correct, in the overlay district. I don't think, defer to the city attorney, I don't think we could put any requirements on the property that would restrict its current zoning, so...
Right, I mean, we'd have to negotiate some sort of agreement governing the future development of the property, so we would want to put this on hold if we wanted to consider some sort of arrangement like that.
And how would a lien impact sale of property? Would it slow it down? Would it impact it, or just be...
Like I said, yeah, we, we don't control, of course, when a property sells. When there's a willing buyer and agreed-upon price, the lien would have to be paid, you know, once the, the transaction occurs, so...
My question is, would they probably only raise the price up to cover the lien? And that might impact the ability to sell?
Certainly would, that's certainly something they could do.
And my concern is, it, it's been on the market for almost a year and it's not sold yet.
But is there any for-sale signs out there?
Yes, yes.
There is?
Yes.
I guess about a year, maybe not quite a year, but...
It has been a year.
It's been a long time.
Did we pay for the, the removal of the trailers?
No, the property owner did that.
So, are they going to clean the removal of those trailers and stuff? I was asking, did we pay for that?
No. I think that, and I'm only speculating, but the other, the property where Hills Paint and Body is part of this parcel, and I believe that they're going to vacate that, they're building a new facility somewhere, so that may be, you know, why the property hasn't sold, because there's a current tenant there. I don't know the condition or status of that building, but I would, I would anticipate any redevelopment in that area is not going to, the existing structures will not remain.
I mean, this is a standard-issue investment that the city's looking at doing, so I'm, I'm trying to sit here in my head and figure out what the ROI is, the return on investment. So, we're fixing to invest thirty thousand dollars, you know, watch my payoff. How long's it going to take for us to recoup for the citizens this thirty thousand with a profitability index of plus one?
Yeah, I mean, the question is, how, how long would you like a substandard structure to stay?
Right, yeah, that's definitely...
Demolished at some point in the future. Certainly could demolish and, and attach a lien to the property.
It really is, it really is how you look at this as well.
Can we table it or something?
You, you can certainly table it. So, what, what we've done, obviously, if you look at this from an economic development standpoint, I understand it's hard to swallow. You're essentially providing an investment of taxpayer dollars with no development guarantee. But if you look at this in terms of, and you all may recall, I'll use, for instance, that, I don't know if it was last year, the house where the people passed away and it was a hoarder situation, we had to go through and build the case with staff time for a substandard building matter, and then we end up tearing it down and we place a lien on the property. The property owner here is allowing us to forego all of that and just sign the release and said, "Go ahead and do it, I won't even contest it, you don't have to build the case, you don't have to come to the council, you don't have to provide the staff report and the findings of it being a substandard building." This is really in lieu of having to go through the substandard building process. We actually have a willing property owner who's agreed to just relinquish in, in any opposition to that. This is an expedited substandard building case, not really an economic development project.
Well, the other thing I'm concerned about is what happened with the Bud Starnes property. You know, now we've got this big, giant gaping hole, which, in my mind, is a safety hazard with that demolition, and that's going to be even more expenses that have to go out, and it just seems like we're spending, again, lots of money, but not seeing much return on that money that's being spent. And I just don't want to get into that cycle of doing this. I understand the importance of it and why we're doing it, but it just seems like it's happening too often.
Unfortunately, we've got a lot of buildings that are in need of repair and in disrepair, and if, if that's the situation, then some steps must be taken, and...
Would this be a catalyst, and either, we can table it if we need to look at it, but I, I was sitting here trying to think, because I don't know the area, but if we tear this down and clean it up, and assuming the guy's asked in a fair price, would, would this be a catalyst for bringing more development into that area? These are questions.
I might defer to Gabe, whether he has any thoughts on whether it would be a catalyst. I mean, obviously, you know, the benefit of scraping the property, as Gabe said, is it, it makes it more attractive to development. Developers don't want to incur the costs and expense and, and, you know, the time commitment associated with abating asbestos and tearing down a building. So, getting it back on the tax rolls, even at thirty-five thousand dollars, if you can get a decent commercial development on that property, you'll be able to recoup that investment in, in short order.
That's correct, and there, there's a number of parcels along Saginaw Boulevard where the, the land value is likely more than that of the structures that exist. You know, just to the south of there, there's some older buildings that are not in the greatest shape, and that, that real estate is likely worth more than that structure, so whoever redevelops that is not going to keep the structure. It's just a, we're, we're sort of in a, something has to be done because the unsafe building procedure has been initiated, so everybody's sort of made the determination that the building needs to come down, it's just a matter of when.
If we go through the thing of forcing them to tear their own building down, what would that cost us? Do you have any, can you give us?
We, we can't, we can order that the building be demolished within a certain number of days, and if they fail to do so, then we can reserve the right to do it ourselves, which typically, when you, when you have property owners that don't have the financial means, that's what happens. In other words, we can't force them to spend money that they may not have or be willing to spend. So, we would go through the process, issue the order, staff would build the case, we'd go through the, you know, the multiple slides of how deteriorated the building is, we'd issue the order of demolition on the property owner, the property owner would be unlikely to act on it, and then we'd be right back here in front of you asking for permission to, to tear it down.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, is figure out how much it would cost us to go through that process versus just tear it down, be done with it.
Right, well, I mean, it would, in, in no doubt, it would be more cost than what you're being presented with now, because you're going to have the staff time associated with it.
Right.
You're going to pay me to draft the order.
Larry's got other things to do than this, but Larry's got a lot of stuff I'd rather him do than this, but, yeah, it would take hours and hours of your staff's time and...
We've already got a lot of hours in this, to be honest with you.
Well, there you go. It would be even more, it would be even more if we went through the whole process, yeah.
You know, candidly, it, it is unusual for a prop, for the owner of a substandard building to just say, "I agree, I'll sign it, you have full access, and you can tear it down, and place a lien on my property." Usually, it's contested, and, or you have an absentee owner like we did with the Hoarding House, and we had to go through the entire process just to secure the order.
Charlie, do you have a question?
I'm just more concerned about, okay, we've got the authority to go in and do it because he's basically given us that already, but where do we recoup the thirty thousand dollars that it's going to cost us to have the asbestos taken out of it?
So...
And then tear it down?
Right, no, I, I understand, I mean, code enforcement can cost money. When we go in and mow somebody's homesteaded property because they have high weeds and grass, and we place a lien on their property and we can't foreclose because it's homesteaded, we're just out the money. When we abate junked vehicles, we have to pick up the vehicle, we have to have it demolished, we have to go through the process in municipal court, don't necessarily recoup the cost. I mean, unfortunately, code enforcement, that is, the cost of code enforcement is the, is, the benefit of code enforcement and the cost associated with it is you're pursuing the end result of beautifying the city. So, that, that's the reward, and then, you know, and, yeah, and safety, I mean, fortunately, unlike with a junked vehicle, you actually have a developable site where you could potentially recoup the cost through future ad valorem taxes once, you know, quality redevelopment occurs.
Basically, what you're saying, this is just the cost of doing business.
It's the cost of code enforcement. Some cities ignore code enforcement issues, and you have junked vehicles and deteriorating homes and health and safety issues, and other cities are more aggressive and budget specifically for that, understanding that there's a cost associated with beautifying the city.
So, to be clear, this is a, the item before says fourteen thousand dollars for the asbestos removal, and then beyond that, then it would be a demolition, which Larry said, at least nine, so, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, so that's the cost. And it is, I mean, I, I'm so happy how much better the site looks with those trailers gone, and I think get this out and cleaned up, we bring in something new, better, to beautify and make the city a little, little nicer. So, yeah, I'm, I'm all for this, and it's unfortunate, it is a lot of money, but it's the sort of the cost of what we got to do to clean up the city and keep things going good, you know?
So, I have one question. So, is it, is, is this two separate lots? The Hills lot is one lot, and this is another, or is it being sold all as one?
All one.
So, if, if there's issues with the Hills body shop, we may have to go through all this again? I mean, if we're trying to get this property sold?
So, again, we can't control when the property is sold. I, I don't know the condition of the Hills, generally, the, the structure. My guess is whoever buys that corner is going to demolish that building, so it's just that this corner building has already been declared unsafe, so it's a lot worse, and I believe it's been vacant for about twenty-plus years.
Yes.
A, a good long time.
They've, they've done some storage in there, I'm sorry, but, you know, another thing to look at, too, is we're already having issues with, and I'm in full contact with the owners constantly, they're already crawling and breaking in this building, so we've got to make a decision. I, I know that's hard, but we either do this, or I have to approach it back to the substandard, and we've, we've got to do something.
Well, and I just want to be clear, too, compared to the last demolition that was completed, if it's council's pleasure and desire, we can, we can attach a lien for, for our cost, and it'll just sit on that property.
But that's not what y'all told the Williams. I have the emails.
Yeah, yeah, that was the direction, but the city council can choose if that's the case. Otherwise, the Williams are going to have to incur cost, like Larry mentioned, go through the unsafe building procedure. I've been in contact with the daughter of one of the...
Okay, but, but when, but when we talked, and Todd talked, and I talked, the Williams, we told them that we would knock it down because they were, had some misunderstandings with you and the way things were going, and so they didn't want anything else to talk about, so they wanted to talk to Todd, and I have all the emails at my office, and I'll be happy to bring them up here.
Sure.
But y'all said that we could knock it down, didn't see any reason why the city couldn't knock it down, because they lost two family members when all this started, they did everything you wanted them to do, they got the trailers out of there, they got it cleaned up.
Sure.
And you just kept pushing them, and so, and they don't have the funds.
Well, you know...
Until they sell the property, and I don't think it's fair that you can go back on your saying and put a lien against it.
Gabe would not be going back, it would be the city council.
Yeah, well...
It's our decision, it's not his.
And it's not a personal thing, we're talking about an unsafe structure, right?
And I'm ready, I'm ready to pay for it and tear it down.
Yeah.
Tonight.
We'll do whatever y'all would like.
But it's the city council's decision, it's not Gabe's.
Yeah.
Let's be clear. We own this.
So, the city council has kind of talked to this family, and there is an understanding?
Through, through Gabe.
They've talked to Gabe and me and Todd.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I mean, I...
The city, yes.
But there's, there, there is an understanding that will...
They're expecting for us to tear it down and us to incur the cost, that's what their expect, expectations are.
...
I think we knew there'd be asbestos there, we just know how much, we knew there was something there, we didn't know how the cost would be, sure.
Sure.
And I did talk to one of the guys almost a year ago, and he was, was a little upset, but, but I told him, I said, "I, I want to clean this place up, I want y'all to sell it and make a lot of money, but to do that, we probably have to tear stuff down."
I wish we would have known about the conversations that y'all had, it would have made this decision a little bit easier. I'm sorry. Well, I mean, you don't supply the agenda and the attachments, but it'd be nice to have all the information.
Any other questions for Larry?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Oh, Mary, I'm sorry.
Not a question, but just, I just wanted to state how I feel about it, and thinking about all the pluses and minuses. You know, sometimes cities and individuals have to spend money upfront for something better in the future, and this is an unsafe structure, I think it's good to get rid of it, and I don't believe we should put a lien on it because I think that property should be as attractive to somebody to buy and not have any negative, something negative attached to it like a lien that might make it less attractive to buy, and the way our city is growing and the interest we are getting from businesses, I, we can't see into the future, but I think if you have an attractive piece of land that has no negatives attached to it, it would be more likely to be sold for a business that would then have to pay property taxes and sales tax perhaps, which we would, like Brentstick said, we would probably recoup our investment quickly. Even though we can't see in the future, we don't know, but to me, we should prepare it for that eventuality and understand we have to spend some money upfront. For a, for an individual's budget, that's a lot of money, but for a multimillion-dollar city budget, it's really not, and we would recoup a lot more in the future possibly if we go ahead and just demolish it and don't put a lien on it. How is this properly, property currently zoned?
I believe it is community commercial.
Thank you.
Are any other questions for Larry? I'm going to let Larry sit down, he's been up there for a while. No, thanks, sir, appreciate it. Are any other questions, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item C and D, unless you want to do them separately. You can do them separately if you want to, or we can do them both. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I move that we approve items for C and D as presented.
Thank you. Have a second? Mr. Tucker, a second? All those in favor raise your right hand? All those opposed? All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Larry. All right, moving forward, item number five, recognition of Government Finance Officers Association Award, sorry, Mike, sorry. Award of Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Finance Reporting Presented to the City of Saginaw and Finance Director Kim Quinn. So, Gabe, this is you.
Mayor and council, I know you were probably as worried as I was that we would not, for the thirtieth time, receive the award for excellence in financial reporting, but I am proud to be with you here this evening and announce that the thirty-year streak continues, so like to recognize Kim Quinn for her work, and our finance staff is here, so for those not familiar, this award comes from the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's related to the preparation of our, our audit, so the preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report, which you all, in a few months, will see for a presentation from Weaver, and that's like a, you know, a ten-minute summary of weeks and months of work, so we're really proud of our finance staff and Kim, and I believe she told me she had a ten- or fifteen-minute acceptance speech.
We're going to, we're going to make her come up here and speak.
You know how much I love this. I just wanted to say, it's really a group effort. Like Gabe said, this is the result of a whole process, really throughout the whole year, and every department in the city plays a part in this. Every department is, provides the information that we request, follows the rules that we have set up, and make sure that all of the controls that need to be there to ensure generally accounting, generally accepted accounting principles are followed, so it's, it's really a team effort, but especially the finance department, and not everybody could be here tonight, but I'm glad that some of the staff is here because, really, they provide excellent customer service to our internal and our external customers every single day with a smile on their face, and, and follow so many rules that nobody knows about, but, you know, they balance everything every day. They do the billing and, and follow so many rules, and the receivables and court, and so it really is a group effort, it's not just this report, it's all of the things that go into it. So, I wanted to recognize the whole department, and I'll mention the names of the people that are here, and then you get to get your picture taken. Beverly Brown, Maria Guine...
Beverly Brown, Maria Guines, Karen Cromwell, and Almy Young are here tonight, but it's really a group effort.
Suitable for framing? Alright, we'll take a picture. That was actually a pretty good speech for Kim Quinn, that's, that's the longest I've heard you talk ever, I think. It's great.
Janice, is, you got a cellphone?
A picture, guys, I can do it.
Wish me and you could get out of this picture.
So y'all left. They would just wait for their picture.
But I think that's the longest I've ever heard Kim Quinn speak without having a dollar number associated with her talk, so it's pretty impressive.
She is definitely an asset to our city. Definitely.
Alright, thank you, guys. Number, uh, moving forward, item number six. At six thirty-two, we're in a public hearing. Consider this an action regarding ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-four, creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone containing approximately two-hundred-ninety-five-point-four-four acres of non-contiguous land generally located north of Bailey-Boswell Road, north of McElroy, west of Saginaw Boulevard, and being wholly located within the corporate limits of the City of Saginaw. For that, City Manager Gabe Ram.
Mayor and council, uh, the action before you would create, uh, the city's first tax increment reinvestment zone, or TERs. We love acronyms in, in city work. Um, this district is non-contiguous. The largest two parcels would be Belt Mill, um, the Levon White Track, Globe Aviation Track. I think that's, oh, Dolph's got the graphic. Uh, so the intent of creation of TERs for the, uh, viewing and listening public, hundreds if not thousands, we are committing a percentage of the taxable value and the ad valorem taxes raised within the boundaries of this, uh, district to fund future public improvements. So should the council approve this this evening, uh, this will go to two other taxing entities, Tarrant County and, uh, Tarrant County College, and we'll ask for their participation. Our county commissioner, J.D. Johnson, has indicated he'll support, and Tarrant County, um, will, uh, participate in the TERs at fifty percent. So, uh, for the, the layperson, that means fifty percent of the, um, taxable value from the city, uh, Tarrant County and Tarrant County College will stay in this district to fund things like streets and drainage and public improvement. So, um, action before you tonight would create the district. If you have, uh, specific questions about the, um, TERs, I'm happy to address those. If you have legal, uh, questions, Bren can handle that. And then we have Kyle Skorsky from, uh, P3, our TERs consultant. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
And let everybody be clear, there are no specific structures associated with this TERs right now. People asked me that question. We could in the future, but right now it is just to create this TERs. We're not saying what we're gonna build, what we're gonna go, we'll have to determine that in the future, that will be determined by the board. Uh, so this is just to create the actual, uh, entity itself.
Uh, yes, sir, that's, that's correct. And, uh, I might add, the TERs will have a separate board, which will include the city council and likely represented from the other taxing entities. Much like the, uh, crime control CCPD, you all are on the board of directors for the CCPD. The city council will serve that function for the TERs. There's no projects that are, you know, guaranteed, uh, with this action. We will have a project plan that'll come before the council that identifies, uh, what we anticipate development-related projects to be within the, um, the boundaries of the TERs. And, uh, like everything else, it can be amended as needed in the future.
Council questions? Yes, Cindy, go ahead.
Uh, personally, I would like to table this because we didn't get the documentation, documentation till about four o'clock this afternoon and really haven't had a chance to read through this with any sort of, uh, comprehension and looking into things. But as I was scanning through, I noticed on the, not the ordinance, but the, um, the preliminary project and finance plan document, that you have the nadatorium listed as a potential project. Personal opinion here, I would like to have that removed from this list because we've only agreed to the, um, memo of understanding. And, uh, I've already hear a lot of buzz that people are saying, just because we voted on this, it's a done deal, and it's not. So I'd like to have that removed from this document. But again, I would like some time to go through and, and study this, rather than just approving something without having the opportunity to look at it in any depth.
Sure, so the, the actual document that's before you is, is the ordinance that was, uh, drafted. Again, the action is just to create the district, it doesn't guarantee that any of the projects are funded. Uh, Bren may be able to answer the specifics if you have any specific questions.
That, that's right. The, the ordinance itself is form-driven. There are a list of seven or so required elements to it pursuant to chapter three-eleven of the tax code. So the ordinance itself is, is fairly inflexible. Um, the, the, the minimum language is required to be in there. But of course, it doesn't say a whole lot more than my legal opinion to you all provided, which is, we find that the area is mostly vacant and undeveloped. It appoints the TERs board, which is essentially the entire council. And then the county is entitled, but not obligated, to appoint a single member. And the college district is entitled, but not obligated, to appoint a single member. So this council will decide what happens. Um, and prior to debt being issued, you can terminate the TERs at will. Um, you can just dissolve it and it goes away.
Well, I mean, there's, again, uh, is there property we wanna remove from this? Is there other property that could be added to this?
All, all we're approving is, is pages one through seven. We're not approving this last section, right?
Well, it, it is attached, but it's just a preliminary plan.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the project plan, uh, preliminary project plan will come to the city council, I believe, at our next meeting. Um, and if the city council approves that project plan, again, that's really not binding. It doesn't commit the city council to, you know-
So we're not approving this project plan?
That is correct, you are not approving the project plan. Project plan will come, uh, preliminary project plan will come before the city council in the future. And if you'll recall, we have created two, uh, public improvement districts, different financing mechanism. But it doesn't obligate the city to fund those improvements. So not until, you know, debt is issued and, you know, we actually proceed to construction are we really, uh, married at the altar.
So we're not approving any of this, right?
It's a little confusing to add all that together, especially, I think it was, we could've done that a little better. I, I think part of that is, we should just put the agreement, that's what we're approving tonight, 'cause we're not approving a plan, 'cause there is no plan yet. We're thinking about stuff, yeah, we've got some ideas, but there's nothing to approve yet, so I think that's some of the confusion. Um, other questions, council? Questions, concerns?
Sure, what's next?
Yes, Mary, yes, Mary.
So, am I correct in stating, A, that this ordinance is pretty much generic? And B-
It's, it's form-driven. It just draw, it draws the lines on the map for the areas in question.
By creating this, we're setting the groundwork and letting things start happening. And-
Until you issue any debt, everything is revocable at will and dissolvable.
So it's just really the first step in getting these developments going, and it's not promising anything specific.
That's correct. And, and you, you all sitting as the board will decide where the money goes. And you're just taking city tax dollars and giving it to yourself to spend on projects within the zone. And the benefit of the TERs, obviously, you could do that anyway without the TERs, right? If you'll receive the ad valorem taxes, you wouldn't need a TERs. The reason the TERs is advantageous is you are now going to also receive county tax funds and college district tax funds, which you wouldn't receive but for the establishment of the TERs. And as, as you know, e- even if both of the other two entities appoint a member, it's a seven, seven to two majority for the council.
So we were talking earlier about the condition of some of the other properties, especially along Saginaw Boulevard. It sounds to me that this is gonna kind of block them from getting any monies. You know, they won't have that money available for any sort of improvements or anything.
How so?
Well, 'cause, I mean, if we have the TERs set up, you know, that money's reinvested back into that, that zone. So-
So- It's the money from that zone that's reinvested back in the zone, it's not from the rest of the city.
Right, right. But I'm just talking about, you know, the other parts of the city, like property on Saginaw Boulevard, three forty-five.
Well, you're only, you're only collecting fifty percent, is that right? So the other fifty percent of the taxes that will be generated through this prompting of development go straight into the general fund, and then you can spend it everywhere in the city.
Okay.
Gabe, are you gonna say something?
Yeah, um, I, I think I understand, uh, what you're asking. So you generally wanna, uh, create a TERs before development has happened? Because after development happens or during, the taxable value increases. And the increment, which is the I in the TERs acronym, um, pays for your public improvements. So most of Saginaw Boulevard is already developed. Uh, the only property that was included in the TERs boundaries for future redevelopment is the fire station because it's currently not a taxable va, uh, property with taxable value. It's municipal facility. We anticipate at some point in the future, it will return to private hands. Hopefully something, you know, fun and cool, like a restaurant or, you know, entertainment venue, all the things that people, uh, would like. So, um, if that makes sense. Because what we're saying is fifty percent of the new taxable value that we create is not gonna go straight to the general fund, it's gotta stay in the district. Which is fine, we've got plenty of public improvements in these developments, uh, drainage, water, sewer, roadways, that sort of thing.
Todd?
Yes, ma'am.
And also to point out that that fifty percent will be eligible to be spent in four different areas.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Not just one area.
Correct. Anywhere within the boundaries, yeah. The vast majority, we anticipate, will be in Belt Mill and Levon White Track whenever that sells. Uh, but it would be eligible anywhere in the TERs boundaries.
Nick, you do have a question?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I interrupted you earlier, I didn't wanna leave you.
No.
Okay. Council, other questions, comments? Alright, this is a public hearing, that means the public is allowed to speak. You don't have to contact the city secretary, you can just approach the, uh, the dais and speak. So the mic's open, anybody wants to say anything on this, it's, now's the time. If not, and if no other council questions, concerns, then at, uh, oh, go ahead.
So with these, with the, um, with the, the Hills property and all of that, could that be added into this? Or any of those other vacant lots that's on Main Street?
Uh, not at this point, I think we would have to advertise, re-advertise the TERs boundaries.
But it could've been.
Yeah, you can add any property, yeah, to a TERs boundary. The, the trick in this, um, this map was not by accident. The trick is when you create a TERs, you're taking off some amount of taxable value. So the trick for us, as a growing city, as we continue to grow in population, um, and people that we need to serve, our general fund needs to grow as well. So if we take developed property and take that out away from the general fund, we've gotta be really careful. So the, the parcels, again, are largely undeveloped, um, or they've been, uh, non-taxable like the fire station. So it's really not, we're not taking money out of our pocket at this point.
So if we, I mean, we're all sitting around the, uh, fire station now with the senior citizens that area there. All of us is envisioning that being repurposed and sold and something really nice put in there. So at that time then, would that come out of the TERs? 'Cause I think we said we could move things in and out of the TERs.
So remove that from the TERs boundaries, you're saying, once you have a-
Once we got it, you, you got that, or are we under contractual agreement 'cause of people that came in and, and, uh, you know, revitalized it and stuff?
Sure.
I mean, I'm sure that TERs-
But why would we wanna take it out of the TERs?
The, I, I guess the, I'll do a, in the words of the famous investor Charlie Munger, thinking inversion. So at inversion, the, uh, let's think about why we would have it in the TERs. Because having that property eligible would have TERs, uh, funding available for redevelopment. So we know more than likely the current structure's there, will need to go, or there may be public improvements to support a, a private, um, redevelopment. So that's why it's included, if that's, makes sense. We would want that to be TERs eligible. So let's say, and sadly, I don't think this will happen, but let's say Babes comes to us and says, "North Richmond Hills is not enough, we wanna be in Saginaw." What are you gonna do to make us come there? And we can say, "Well, we can do pavement for ya," or "We can participate," and use the TERs as a funding mechanism. If the city council desires, sell that property outright on the open market. Um, and then whatever the property's owned for, you know, could be built there, so.
Is there a certain percentage of this property that has to be used for residential housing, um, versus retail or municipal-type buildings? Can we-
No, so the-
Can we dictate more retail?
No, you can't. So that's, that's dictated by the property zoning, the TERs is just a financing mechanism.
Can we change the property zoning?
Uh, the city can initiate rezonings, um, but it's not, not related to the TERs.
Okay.
Council, other questions? Other questions, concerns? Citizens, anything else? 'Cause we are still in a public hearing. And I've gotta remember to close it, 'cause I forget that sometimes. If no other questions, no other comments, at six forty-eight, it'll take us out of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-four, creation of tax increment reinvestment zone. Do I need to just make the geographical designation as presented?
As presented, that's sufficient.
I'll second.
Mr. Beasley, second? Alright, anything else, any other questions on this? If not, please vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? That's, thank you, guys. Thank you, Gabe. Thank you, Bren. No executive session this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Good, good idea. Valerie, second? All those in favor? Six forty-nine, we're adjourned. Thank y'all.